Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Ms. Fox, could you call the roll, please?
Justin Canales.
Here.
Ernie Reichstad.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Mike Sylvester.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bill Enright. Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dean Blumetti. Nicholas Pompeole.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ryan Bruce.
Okay.
I'm accused on this matter, so Dave Brady is here.
Okay. So, should we wait to go in a closed session? Would you make a motion to go in a closed session with you here?
Yeah, with Dave.
With Dave, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady? How are you, sir? All right, tonight, we're going to start, start off by going into an executive session to discuss the pending litigation, O N V One Holdings LLC versus Sparta Township Planning Board, and we'll be discussing attorney-client privileged communication. May I have a motion to move into closed session for the purposes of discussing the pending litigation?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
I'll second.
Okay. So, we're going to move into, into closed session. Mr. Brady, do you feel like, probably like 20 minutes or half hour tops?
If it goes a half hour, I'd be surprised.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We should do a roll call or an all in favor, Mr. Brady?
Oh. Yes.
Roll call, all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor.
Hi.
Thank you, Dory.
Okay, so we're live again, okay. So, I'd like to have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Nick Pompeole?
Yes.
Ernie Reichstad?
Yes.
Chairman Ron Day?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You did.
Thank you. I'll give them the heads up.
Nick, do you do land use work? Or you're just an attorney, and so you recognize?
Nope, I do personal engineering.
Oh, okay. So, you're familiar with land use?
Getting familiar.
Okay.
It's a crash course.
Had that wonderful five hour training on Thursday night, though.
Woo!
With the NJPO? Yeah, that's a fun one.
It's a good one.
Actually, for, I mean, I'll give him credit.
They do a pretty good job. They do a pretty good job of laying it all out.
I'll be able to sit there and talk for five hours, so they did it okay.
Yeah, I hope your instructor was fun.
Yeah, and the attorney was, she, you could tell she knew, you know, it's all she did.
Okay, good. I had to, I sat on a planning board, and some reason, when they were offering the courses, this was like in 2014 or maybe 2013, they were only offering the course in some places, and like I had to get it done by a certain time. So, next thing, I know I'm like driving two hours away, like I was in South Jersey somewhere.
In person?
In person, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So, I'm sitting in a classroom, like it's 9:00 AM, I had to drive like an hour and a half.
Yeah, no, they made it convenient. It was just five hours to get it done, sign the cert.
Oh, that's great. It used to be like an in-person, like, like it was like you were sitting in like a college course, classroom, like a community college.
I assume it's the same organization that sends these out, right?
Planning officials, yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 Hang on to these?
I would keep that, it's a good thing to have.
I think it is.
Very good thing to have.
All right, so we're going to get back to the agenda. So, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and I'm going to ask that, we defer that to our next session unless anybody has an objection. Okay, so we'll defer that to the next, anyone down here? I just want you to look both directions.
We do it to a motion.
We did, we did.
Oh, we did that, we did that. Okay. So, that gets us down to the next item on the agenda, which are the correspondence. There are seven of them listed. These items are provided as informational purposes only. I think they're pretty self-explanatory. I know we got a lot on our plate tonight, so I think unless anybody has any questions on any of these items, we could just move to the next session. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, see none? Okay, so that then brings us to other board business. And I'm going to suggest that we have a lot of items on the other board business tonight. So, if no one objects, I'd like to go right to the public hearing first and then discuss the, the matter of other board business after the public hearing. Does anybody have an objection with that? Okay, so why don't we go right to the public hearing? The public hearing is Planning Board Application Number 712 Titan Elite LLC, Seven Aaron Way, Block 16001, Lot 19, this is an amended site plan, and...
Chairman Day, they're not here.
They're right outside.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Or we could, if you want more time, we could do the other stuff first, so I'll leave it up to you.
Do you have a question?
Gentlemen, please, welcome. Thanks for coming before us tonight.
One question.
Thank you. Gentlemen, I'll swear in the witnesses who might testify for the applicant tonight. Gentlemen who might be testifying, please raise your right hands. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you, and please state your name, spell your last name, and give us at least a business address.
My name is Stephen Sullivan, last name S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N, address is 14 Park Lake Road, Sparta, New Jersey. Is this a quick pickup? I'd just speak.
It's better to pick up the remote mic, I guess.
Jason Dunn with Extra Associates, professional planner and landscape architect.
Thank you, Jason. The board recognizes and accepts Jason Dunn's qualifications as a professional planner and certified landscape architect, and please go ahead, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert McBreyer, attorney with Skate Price Smith &amp; King. We represent the landlord Timna 480 LLC. Per lease agreement, we're authorized to seek planning board approvals for the application before you filed by Titan Elite LLC. By way of brief introduction, the applicant seeks amended site plan approval, variance relief, and waivers to use the existing building for indoor recreational use, including gymnastics training and cheerleader instruction as well as associated office space. The subject property is identified as block 16001, lot 19 on the township's tax maps, and is commonly known as Seven Aaron Way. The property is located in the township's economic development zone, which expressly permits indoor recreational uses such as gymnastics, basketball, soccer, health clubs, and other similar uses. Titan has established itself as a talented and highly respected provider of athletic instruction, coaching, and training for young children in the area. It seeks to continue providing these services at the subject facility. With me this evening, as just introduced, are Jason Dunn, who will testify as an expert in the field of professional planning, as well as authorized representative Stephen Sullivan on behalf of Titan Elite LLC. We are in receipt of the township's technical review reports and will address the comments and questions that were contained therein. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dunn and ask that he provide an overview of the site plan as well as the relief being requested. Thank you. Application is for occupancy of an existing building and site, kind of a change in use that was a committed use. The site is already built. There is no proposed new building addition for even land disturbance. Existing parking and curbing will stay as it is. We are proposing new line striping and a different circulation pattern, which I believe is one of the reasons for this board. It would be a one-way around the back and then exiting on the neighborhood of lot 20. There is an existing access easement in place for that, for that exit. The reason we're restriping the parking is to increase the amount of parking to maximize the site. This is a gymnasium, which also by your parking ordinance would be considered a studio or similar to a studio. So that's the parking formula that we have to use, which is one space per 100 square feet. So we're here tonight also for an amended site plan, but also for a variance for not having the adequate parking for your ordinance. There are two ADA compliant stalls. There are 50 physical spaces being proposed. The rear of the building has garage doors or overhead doors that the initial approval was for what they call a flex building. They didn't have an end-user in mind when they got the first approval for this, so they figured it might be a contractor or someone who would need loading and unloading. This user does not need that. So those overhead doors would be non-functional by way of loading or parking or getting into the building. They're only really going to be used for ventilation if the weather permits. There are two EV ready spaces proposed. The, one of the technical reports had mentioned that one of those spaces has to be accessible for ADA requirements, and we would agree to make sure that that would be, that would be moved to accommodate that. We're asking also for a design waiver for not providing two loading spaces because the building is just over 10,000 square feet. Your design standard ordinance requires two designated loading spaces. We ask for relief on that because this particular use does not require loading and offloading of the product. If anything, it would be minor office supplies, so it would be a UPS truck from time to time, not a regular in-and-out loading that you have to designate a spot. Those kind of deliveries could be done right in front of the building along the driveway because they're, it won't take long in and out. As syndicated, I agree that use is permitted in your ED zone. It's gymnastics and cheerleading training. This is highly specific. It's for individual clinics and team training. There will be no competitions held inside the building where we had, where we would have other, other businesses, competitors come in here, spectators. This is not that at all. This is for private training. Those kind of competitions are held in a regional basis, whether it's in Lake City or other places. We can have the owner talk a little more about that later. There's no bleachers or seating for spectators. Age of the athletes can be from four years old all the way up to seniors in high school, 18-year-old, and then after that, they move up to college level and they no longer are trained by this company. Participate 11 to 20 participants per session. A session lasts between an hour and an hour and a half. There would be three coaches and one office manager, and with 50 physical parking spaces, I keep saying physical because by, by the numbers, we actually get credit for 52 because of the two EV spaces, but it was really 50 spaces. Even if this was maxed out and every single student had one driver and the coaches and the employee for the office all drove together, it would only amount to 44 spaces. So we still have some left over for that. The sessions do overlap so that one session that's ending, ending their, their practice session, while that's ending, 15 minutes before it ends, another session comes in and starts stretching and warming up. That's important so that we don't have a traffic conflict of everybody trying to leave at the same time everybody's trying to come in. So we think that that works the best way and is the most efficient use. Hours of operation, we really don't want to get locked down to anything too specific, so we would say 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and close Sundays. You know, right now, they have several sessions a week. They have something called open, open use for young kids during winter time. They would, it would be by registration only, it would be limited numbers. They could come and use some of the facilities just to get out of the bad weather, just of exercise. That's as far as I have for the site. I know this site has a little bit of a history of outdoor storage and overusing the site, so to speak. That, that tenant has been moved out. If you've heard of that, that is not what this application is for. All the outdoor storage of those wood products, which had several violations, it's all gone, the tenant's gone. The building has been vacant, the site has been vacant since fall of last year while Stephen, the owner, has been trying to get this, get moved in here. The building itself, this was submitted as part of the application. Before it was deemed complete, we had to have accurate drawings of the building. There is no photo signage. Reason it doesn't need signage is because it's such a specific use that his, his students and their parents, they, by word of mouth, they know of this. They don't need to know by signage. This doesn't have like, he's not pulling people off the street. So besides building identification, you know, the number, we wouldn't need any signage on this. If in the future you would need it, you'd have to go for the site plan waiver committee and see where it goes from there. But it's this application, no signs. There is existing septic, but agree to make sure that the health department agrees that that is adequate for this use. Existing water connection, existing power connection, every, everything is there. But probably the most attractive part of this building to, to this user is the wide-open training area. There's no interior support columns to be in the way of what he needs to do to have these athletes improve themselves. There is different equipment, trampolines, something that you called in the past.
Tumble track?
The tumble track.
And the floor, the floor itself.
Floor, it calls it the floor, but I'll let him describe that a little bit better. But the, the main point is to do these kind of activities, you need a lot of space. And that's important to know because if this were like something like a dance studio or karate or jujitsu, that could accommodate a lot more students in this space. But the fact is, because these participants are leaping and running and, you know, they're on the horse...
No horses.
No horses.
Just floors and trampolines.
Floors and trampolines. They, they need the space. So you wouldn't have those parking issues that you might have, but the ordinance contemplated with, you know, one per 100 square feet. So the interior of the building is basically staying the same, besides accommodating the equipment and the flooring type, the mats. We are adding a lavatory that would be ADA accessible. There's a break room and two offices. The prior application contemplated a mezzanine over top of the office areas. That was never built out, and this is not part of this proposal. It's just the ceiling of this, of the office. It wouldn't be used for... Are there any questions from the board about the site and building and how we're using it?
Could I suggest that maybe we let Mr. Martin and Mr. Simmons go first? I think a lot of our questions probably get answered with them doing theirs, and then we'll run up and down the dais and then to the public for questions.
Still do have the book planning testimony in. I just wanted to make sure that, up to here, we don't have questions.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions now that you want to ask? Okay.
I did explain about the design exception for loading spaces, but as far as the shortage on parking, there are 98 spaces required for this, for this building, according to your ordinance. We're having, we show 52. My opinion is that this is a C2 variance, better planning alternative, if you will. Positive criteria is that the economic development district shall be to allow for location of permitted uses in a campus-like setting with good access to Route 15 and properly buffered from residential use. So that's in your master plan and your zoning ordinance. This is not near residential use. Behind the property is a park, and it would have no impact to that at all. Also, by allowing this user to occupy this building, it encourages sustained economic growth, and it is what I would say is a clean use that would not impact your wellhead protection aquifer, which is directly underneath this property. There would be no hazardous substances stored here of any significant nature besides, you know, surface cleaners, regular household cleaning products. There's no outdoor storage or drums or anything like that. There's no overnight parking. I find that it furthers three of the land use log goals. Goal A, which would enhance general welfare. As you'll hear from the owner, you know, we've touched upon tonight, this use teaches young men and women how to become confident, how to work in a team, how to build upon themselves, and I think that's very important for the community to have, and all that for the youth to do that. It's a viable, proven and successful business. He's been in business here at Sparta for five years. He's looking to get a larger space to accommodate this, this activity. So it's more, more toward the regulatory spaces that are needed. They compete at national level, so they want to have a space that reflects that. Goal G is to provide sufficient space for a variety of uses for the needs of the citizens. As I explained about the building itself, it doesn't have any support columns in the way of what's needed. So I think because it's an already determined site and the building is sufficient for the use, it fits that goal. Last thing is the goal I promotes the desirable visual environment by not having the outdoor storage that was, that could be here, not having overnight parking or trucks, other contractor issues that might, might arise from a building like this. So it's my opinion that the grant of the parking variance would not be as consistent with your master plan and zoning ordinance. I think that the intent of that was, was noble in that you didn't want these kind of studio uses way overparked and having overlapping large quantities of people coming in and out. That, that's not what it is. I think that's appropriate and would not impair or have a negative impact of it. So I think on balance, the positive certainly outweighs anything. Notice from your professionals if you'd like, or if you have questions for me.
Will there be any more testimony tonight? Would it make sense to go through all the testimony?
Stephen Sullivan's here on behalf of Titan that could provide a little bit more detail about the scope of operations and also to answer any questions that may be posed by the board.
It may be beneficial just to maybe go through the testimony, so we, you know, we may get some of our questions answered there, and then come back and we could do all questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you mind if we go, if we go to the professional and just go through Jason's?
Sure.
Some of those things? Just, I think there's some minor stuff that I'd just like to clear up before we get into any kind of operations.
Let's do that, then.
Thank you. I think, I think a lot of my comment have largely to do just with clarifications because they're housekeeping items that were, you know, misrepresented on the site plan, and it was mostly just, I think, typo errors and, you know, carryovers from previous plans because this is a previously approved site. So because it's not, because you're not proposing to change the site, I don't think they're detrimental. It's not detrimental in that there's going to be an error in, in the building. It's really just the site plan needed to be cleaned up. You probably read the memo. There's a handful of them. I think the zoning table needs to be cleaned up. You know, Mr. Simmons, I had, had indicated in his report the same thing. Some of the setbacks were incorrect, but those can be cleaned up pretty easily. The zoning table needs to be cleaned up, and then the parking calculation needs to be cleaned up because it, it doesn't show the correct calculation right now.
That's right. We, when we initially reviewed this, we had a different spin on it, so to speak, using the one per 200. But you were, we agree that this should be by letter.
Correct, correct. Just to ensure the variances correctly. The other part was... I'll come back to the, when I, when I remember it. The other, the other piece was, Jason let me know via email before the meeting, I made a slight error in the EV spaces required. I misapplied the, the model ordinance and applied the 15% for non-residential uses. It's anything below 50 but over 25 requires one space, and anything above that, under 100 requires two spaces. It's not written very well, the state model ordinance on the EV spaces. So it's unclear if it applies to the, what would be required if you didn't need, if you weren't requesting a variance for the parking, or if it's what you're actually proposing. Technically, I mean, in most cases, common sense would dictate that the parking spaces you actually are providing would, would be what, what rules there, but the, the ordinance is not clear about how it applies that. Either way, they are, they are proposing two spaces, which they are compliant. My memo mentioned that they might need a waiver for that. That's not, that's not the case. I misapplied the, the standard in my confusion there. So they are providing two spaces. They, Jason has indicated that one of the... they are providing two spaces. They, Jason has indicated that one of those spaces would be ADA accessible, which is required per the 5%. So that would, you know, eliminate any kind of waiver for that. And I think, I think that's the only, you know, real commentary, with mostly, mostly housekeeping, mostly, you know, they've really got to clean up the plans if they, if they are approved for final submission. And that's.
I could just add what that is exactly, just to clarify, because two of the, two of the requirements have to do with parking in the front.
Yes.
And I did clarify that. The parking front yard setback was not indicated on the plans, and it's 55 feet from the road right away to the, to the curb line.
Okay.
78 feet from the road right away to the actual parking spaces. So we would comply with that.
Okay.
Maximum front yard parking ratio is 25%, and we are at 20% with 10 spaces in the front yard. So we comply with that. Regarding the setbacks, we had 35 feet, shown on the plan where the ED zone requirements allow 30 feet. So that wouldn't trigger any new relief or variance.
And then the only other one that I don't know if I indicated was the front yard setback, which was previously approved for 75 feet, shows existing 100, but I believe the dimension on the plan shows, does it show 75 feet? Or it is 100?
The actual dimension to the building is 100.
Is 100, okay.
But the front yard setback.
Was appro, was approved previously for that. Okay. Which I think that's what Dave had indicated on the site plan. Oh, the only other question was about the, the mezzanine inside, if it was ever constructed.
I did not see that with my own eyes, but I was informed by the architect and the owner that that was never.
Okay.
Constructed with stairs to it. There's no stairs to it.
Okay. The mezzanine would impact probably the office calculation for the parking. So that's why it's, it's like additional space because it's up there, but it still counts. So that's just important. So thank you. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Simmons, you want to go through yours now? Do you want to hear the additional testimony or what, what would you prefer?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can go through my comments because I think between Catherine and the applicant, they've covered a lot of the items, but I'll just flesh out a couple other things if I may.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, this is from the report I did prepared February 5th, 2024. They summarized what's going on with the site plan and the circulation change and what have you, and the parking. And one of the things I wanted clarification on, which Mr. Dunn just gave, was with regards to the mezzanine area, because as Mr. Ahmed indicated, that would affect the parking calculation as well. With regards to stormwater, this particular site is in the overall development where at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a, call it a regional detention basin, if you will. So that part is taken care of. The exception to that is that over the course of the development of this particular development on Aaron Way, one of the things Eric Powell, the former township engineer, had requested was that there be some language put in the chain of title that basically requires them to do some testing and monitoring of the stormwater discharge from their particular property on an annual basis. The reason for that was, not that this applicant is doing anything wrong, but if they did end up with some sort of pollution down in the township's regional basin, they want to know where it came from. Hopefully, this is an academic statement, if you will. But that's the reason, and whatever documentation he had come up with for the other sites, I'd suggest that be built into this application if the board was to approve that as well. With regards to the lighting plan, there are some other lighting fixtures on the building that haven't been shown, but there was a lighting plan approved for the original application. So I think that's just a matter of adding that on the site plan. With regards to water and septic system, again, they're served by the township water system. I'm not anticipating a problem with that. And the septic system, as Mr. Dunn indicated, would be reviewed with the county health department, just to make sure they're in agreement with the calculations that were prepared for this particular use. I looked at them and they were satisfactory to me, but it's the county health department's jurisdiction. With regards to landscape plan, the only thing I noticed, again, along the rear line of the lots on Aaron Road, Aaron Avenue Drive, there's some evergreen trees that were planted exactly where Mr. Dunn's pointing, and those should be shown on the plan, just so there's a record of that landscaping being provided. With regards to the architectural plans, just a couple things perhaps Mr. Dunn and the applicant can testify to. The way I interpreted the floor plans, the way this was set up, as Mr. Dunn indicated before, it was really set up at the time originally for a flex building. They didn't know if they were going to have one tenant or three tenants, and so there were a variety of garage doors in the back, depending on how many contractors or what use went in there. My assumption is, and maybe you could clarify this for us, that the plans seem to show that those doors are going to remain, and my assumption is you're just not going to use them. You're going to leave them down and locked.
Unless we want to use it for ventilation only. On nicer days, we'll let some air in by opening, but we're not going to use them for in and out deliveries or anything like that.
Okay. And by the same token, in the front of the building, there's three entrance doors because they didn't know, again, how many tenants were going to be there. My assumption is that one of the doors is going to be used for the main entrance, so you can process people through your office area, but the other doors will remain locked?
Yes. We will use the first door on the right as you face the building, go into the office, have our people go through the office. The other doors will not be used.
Okay. The other question I had was, and I'll just read this, the floor plan basically shows an office area with the balance of the first floor being a quote unquote "training area", and I understand with the open no columns, et cetera, et cetera, that's, works good for you. I said the applicant should outline to the board the overall operation of the facility. For example, there are no locker rooms for changing, that type of thing. Maybe if, my suggestion is just to give the board a little background, I'm assuming based on no locker rooms or showers or that type of thing, the students show up, they're already dressed, ready to go, they exercise, and then they leave and go home and shower or whatever.
That's correct. We don't have changing facilities because athletes come to the facility, they come to the facility already prepared with the exception of shoes. So they come in, they do their practice for anywhere between an hour and hour and a half, and then they leave. They don't, there are no need for any sort of locker rooms.
Okay. With regards to signage, indicated that there's no sign proposed right now. Fire protection, do we know? I don't remember from seeing the site plan. Is the building sprinklered right now?
It is not.
It is not. And I think one of the reasons they were waiting to see what the use would be, that might dictate whether it had to be, but my understanding is that you're not going to need sprinkler system for your type of use.
That's also my understanding.
Okay. With regards to an environmental impact statement, there was none prepared for this application because basically the site and the building is done, it's erected. What I just want to remind the applicant is that this is in the wellhead protection area, and the applicant should confirm that there'll be no discharges of hazardous materials from the subject property for the proposed operation.
That's right.
Okay. We need some details for the proposed EV's parking spaces. And as usual, we've got a listing here on page five of my report of the various approvals they've got to get from the county planning board or waiver, the health department, the fire prevention bureau, the construction official, and other, the water department. And also upon completion of the restriping and what have you, to update the site plan as built plan, so there's a record of that for the township zoning officer. And that's my update, Mr. Chairman.
Did go through Mr. Simmons' letter. I agree with, the applicant agreed to clarify or take care of all the matters in the report. I just had two comments. One is about the stormwater. It's possible that this was already reported in the deeds to maintain the catch basin, but we do agree to check into that, do what we need to do. I just didn't want it to be misunderstood that that, maybe that's done, maybe it's not. I'm not sure yet.
And, and I don't know either. That was Mr. Powell's request way back when he was here in the township. So we can check that.
And remember, one of the things that Mr. Powell asked or required to do on these lots is that where, where the stormwater discharges, you have a sump, what's called a sump, I think, right?
Yes.
So the gravel kind of collects there. One of the maintenance procedures was to suck out that gravel annually or something. So yes, we agreed. In the approvals needed for the, for the application, other than this approval, we have land disturbance permit listed. How would, how would we go for that?
Basically, that land disturbance permit, there's, if the board acts favorably on the application, usually you approve it, and you, they've got a lot, list of conditions in the resolution that Mr. Collins puts together. And basically, it's a form that's submitted with copies of the soil erosion sediment control permit, letter from the county health department. It's almost like a clearinghouse to make sure all those resolution compliance items were taken care of. And, and the board secretary sends that over to us. We look at it, or Mr. Stoner checks it out when he's down here on, during the week, and verifies that all the conditions have been met, and then away you go. That's what that's about.
So members of the boards, would you prefer to ask questions now? Would you like to hear the additional testimony first and then ask questions, or?
I have one question. Since we're talking about the mats, and we were talking a little bit about how no hazardous materials are going through, are, are being used, but how are the mats cleaned?
Mopping bucket, something, household cleaner, like a Lysol diluted with water. And we mop them up that way. Windex on mirrors and toilet cleaners in the toilets.
Okay. How often are they cleaned?
Almost every day, three or four days a week.
Just once a day?
Just once a day, yes.
And that's all done inside the building, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Another quick question. So obviously gymnastics, cheerleading, potential for injury. How do, how do you handle any type of blood, that sort of thing? I mean, without any other facilities in there other than, you know, the open floor training, how, how are those things handled?
We have first aid kits, and as coaches, we are training what they call safety certification. So we go through all the things of what to do with broken, what we do with broken bones, small abrasions, big abrasions, spinal cord injuries, and everything else. But we are trained how to best prevent them and how to know how to treat them to our ability, and then call 911 when necessary.
I was just wondering, you didn't mention a difference in summer scheduling. Do you have camps, gymnastic camps, and would that change the number of occupants at all and or traffic situation?
It would change the number of occupants. We operate the summer camps, we do operate summer camps, and they operate from nine to three during the summer weekdays of Monday through Thursday, I believe. But that is a, again, a drop-off situation. They come in, we limit the camps to 25 participants per week. So it'll be the same 25 children each day during the week. They do their activities, they leave at 3:00, and then at 3:30 or 4:00, we resume our team trainings.
Oh, thank you.
I, I've got some questions, but I think I'd rather hear the rest of the testimony and then come back, if that's okay, unless anybody else has any questions that you'd like to ask, you know, before that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a lot of things have been covered, but Mr. Sullivan, could you, I think the board will benefit learning more about you, opposed operations. Could you provide a summary of your recent work experience?
Certainly. I've been coaching gymnastics and cheerleading for 30 years. The past three have been with Titan Elite in Sparta. What we do there is we train athletes in the sport of cheerleading, almost exclusively female athletes at this point. That doesn't restrict boys from doing it, but it's almost exclusively females for us right now. Tumbling, which are like cartreels, forward rolls, back handsprings and flips. Stunting, where athletes will stand on each other and go up and do different skills in the air. And we take these athletes to regional and national competitions. For example, this past weekend, we were in Washington, DC with five teams. Weekend before that, we were in Georgia with two teams. We've been to Atlantic City, and the final goal of the season is to compete in Disney at what they call the summit.
And I assume that Sparta Township isn't one of the locations where that circuit, the national circuit stops for its, its competitions, is that correct?
It does not.
Is it safe to say that the site is focused on the instructional and training and coaching elements and is not meant to serve as a spectator situs or a venue for watching and observing competitions such as the one you just described?
It's exclusively for training, no competitions at all.
And can you provide a little bit more detail as to the type of equipment that you'll have to support the services that you'll provide?
Certainly. It's, as we discussed before, floors. In the large area, there will be a floor that measures 42 feet by 54 feet. This is a flat area that is boards on top of springs with mats covering to keep the surface safe. It enhances tumbling abilities and things like that, safer than falling on the concrete. On the smaller area, there'll be an additional floor for stretching, conditioning exercises, and things like that of 42 by 42 feet. And down the center, excuse me, the plan is to have tumbling trampolines, a regular sized trampoline in the rectangle form, 12 foot by 14 feet, I believe the measurement is, and a running tumble track, which is 40 feet by six feet long.
And the, the dimensions for some of the mats and the equipment, that's standard for this type of activity, is that correct?
That's right. When we go to these competitions, the standard matting is 54 by 42, which this space would enable us to have in our current space, we only have 40 by 42.
And the space that you previously had didn't allow you to accommodate regulation-sized equipment, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And, and that's one of the features that attracted Titan Elite LLC to this facility? Is that, is that accurate?
It is.
Can you talk a little bit about how individuals or teams are enrolled in the programs?
Certainly. I'm going to drink some water first, if you don't mind. Athletes reach out to us via the office or online and tell us they're interested in this sport. What we do is we evaluate the athlete and then place them on a team where we feel their skills best fit for the team and for their own personal progression in the sport.
And how many teams will be on site at, at any given time?
At any given time, two teams at a time.
Okay. And based on your personal experience, having operated a similar facility before, is it your opinion that the facility adequately supports the services that you intend to provide?
It does, yes.
And based on your personal experience, do you believe that the parking is adequate for the services and programming that you intend to provide?
I do.
I think that's all that I have, unless there are any questions from the board.
Okay. Mr. Collins, why don't we start on your end this time? Any questions?
I don't think so. I'm just curious. So between the two buildings, do you have any plans for if people need to walk between the two buildings?
We're not going to keep both. If we are approved of this building, we will vacate the building we're currently in.
Perfect. All right. No, no questions for me, then.
I know your current building's just right down the street from this one.
Correct.
In the same development. How many parking spaces are in that facility?
We have access to 15. There are a total of 45, I believe 45 on the entire site, because we only use a third of the building.
All right. So you're, so you already, you already know what kind of parking you're using.
I do, yes.
All right. And you're transferring it to this place. All right.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
No questions.
No questions.
So, so the one question I had, and this is just me just not understanding, when I looked at the, the site plan, and I guess there's 50 parking spaces, I had trouble identifying the 50 spaces. You know, I, I got one through 33, and I go to 34, and then I lost track from Nick. Can you just kind of help me walk through it?
10 parking spaces in front of the building. Space number 11 through 22 is on the east side of the building. And behind the building, spaces 33 through 50. There's two parallel parking spaces here that your eye may not have caught.
Okay. So like 34? I, I, it's good 33 and 34, and it, it, it just was?
33 through 47 are directly behind the building.
Okay.
Two more.
They're just not numbered on, on, on a drawing? Okay. Ah, okay. I see, I see what I was missing. Thank you. And the parking spaces themselves are what size?
New ones are nine by 20. I think the pre-existing ones may be nine by 18, I'm not sure. I'm sure that design waiver was granted previously.
So, the question is, do we, if, would we need to approve a design waiver if they were 9 by 18?
I don't think we'd have to re-approve it tonight, but...
Okay.
I don't. I don't either. If the... The only ones in question for me is...
I have a scale. I have a small scale.
The good news is, these are all 9 by 20.
Great.
So, we would not need that.
Great, thank you. That's all my questions.
I apologize for having to mention all that.
I just have one question. Thank you, first of all, and just to confirm for the record, you're the only tenant proposed in this.
We will be the only tenant in the building.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Just one quick question in terms of equipment. Is there going to be, going to be any strength training type of equipment on, on site?
No. Everything's body weight that we use, or Therabans, the elastic bands, that's it.
Perfect, thank you.
I have just two questions. I was, I had a chance to look at the website, just to familiarize myself with the use to get an idea. It looks like you offer kind of like the, in the sports world, like travel, like, you know, high commitment, and then like kind of recreation. The half-year is kind of like a rec league, which, you know, great. I noticed that there was a, in the past, maybe, a, a tournament, a tournament or something for half-year cheer?
Yes.
For, at one point in the year, listed in Sparta. So, I was just curious, as we were talking kind of about that tournament play or competition, I know it's probably not to the scale of one of those, you know, very large regional competitions, but what would something like that entail if there was like a, an event?
That wasn't us, first of all. That was a, a thing called the Crown. It's a company that also runs cheerleading competitions. They rented Sparta High School, they did it in, and then they would hold, they have different sections during the days for different ages and different abilities. So, the half-year does more of the high school, more local, like this weekend, we're going down to Lynncroft, the community college, and things like that.
Okay, great. And then the other thing was, I know Christine had mentioned summer camps. Do you offer other kind of like non-team-based activities? I saw there was like a tumbling, like a free play.
Yes. Free play is the one in the morning for the younger children. What happens there is we limit it to 20 participants. Parents bring in their younger children, two to four, basically, and they wander around with their children bouncing on trampolines and running around the open space.
They get gym class for toddlers, yes.
Exactly.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Mrs. Simmons, any additional questions on your part?
No, sir.
Okay. So, I think at this point, we could, we can open up to the public for questions? Any questions for the applicant?
And testimony.
Okay.
Derek.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. Jenny Derrick's tapped into Sparta. Is the exterior going to stay the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Collins?
If the, if the board is ready, you might consider a motion to approve the amended preliminary and final site plan, and the C variant, C2 variants, and site plan exceptions, as requested by the applicant, with the standard conditions, and with the conditions that are, I think, generally as follows. They'll comply with the review reports of the township planner and board engineer. There'll be no hazardous materials used on the site or disposed on the property or in the septic system. They will, if there isn't already language about maintaining and sampling the stormwater as required previously by the township engineer, Eric Powell, then the applicant will have that language added to the deed restrictions on the property. They will obtain health department review of the septic to confirm its suitability for the proposed use. They'll show, revise the plans to show all the details that the planning, planning board planner and engineer requested, and that they described, but one of them was to show the evergreens along the rear property line. They'll provide an ASBIL plan with the revised, revised, revised plans to address the review comments and this resolution. They'll, the use will not be used, well, I'm sorry, the property will be used solely for instructional gymnastics, instructor-led gymnastics and cheerleading. It will not be used for tournaments, or for spectator events, or similar events. There will be only one tenant in the building and on the property, and that tenant will be Titan Gymnastics, and they'll control the entire parking lot. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Matt Burke?
Yes.
Christine Dunne?
Yes.
Justin Canelis?
Yes.
Les Luciano?
Yes.
Nick Pompelio?
Yes.
Bernie Reigstein?
Yes.
Mike Sylvester?
Yes.
Chairman Rondé?
Yes.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, John. Wish you a lot of, wish you a lot of success.
Flash, yeah.
Good evening, thank you. You're the rest of your night.
Just find my papers here. I'll be right back. Thanks for all my work. Why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back, and we'll get to other board business.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We've been looking at potential grants that could be out there to help the planning board and the town in terms of help to fund some of the work that we're doing on, you know, the ordinance work and the various subcommittees master plan, plan endorsement. And I keep hearing about them, or we keep hearing about them, but I wasn't really sure that we were getting the data we need to go chase them. So I spoke with Mr. Zep, Mr. Zep, our town manager, and he thought the best way would be for members of the board here to meet face to face with members of the Highlands Council. So we're looking volunteers, we've got four, four people that'd be interested in doing that, which are Mr. Enright, Ms. Burke, Mr. Canales, and Ms. Luciano. So I'd like to ask the four of them to, to get together and, and we'll have Mr. Enright head up the team and coordinate a date to meet with the members of the council and come back and brief the board on any potential opportunities that you think we could find. I know we've had some, some sessions before, well, top level, but I think to get down to look at this grant, look at that grant, I think that's the face to face. So the objective is to basically understand what grant funding is available, how do we apply, and how can we be made aware of future grants when they become available, so hopefully we can use that to help offset the cost of some of the work we're doing. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, well, thank you for, folks for volunteering. Second topic is the zoning map. So I know there's been a lot of questions on the zoning map in terms of where are we, what's going on? And the town has been, apparently, they've been making some tremendous progress on this. So, Mr. Simmons, if you could, maybe you can kind of give an update on where we stand with that?
I spoke with Mr. Stoner, the township engineer, before I came tonight, and I don't have it on an easel, but the zoning map is in progress. So basically, this is the new map that's in the GIS system, and as you can see, the, I hope you can see, the zones are on there. We've also put an inset on here, so it's delineating for sure where the Highlands preservation versus the planning area is with respect to various parts of the township. And also, they're putting the different zones in, and one of the things they're going to add, I believe, some of the colors are very similar on the old zoning map, and sometimes you have to get real close and personal to make sure you're in the right shade of green, if you will. So we're going to add some additional text there, just so it's clear on the map which one is which, as far as the zones go. So the map is in progress, as I say, it's in GIS, so it'll be able to be compatible with other maps that the township may want to have prepared in the future.
Okay, great, thanks. And, you know, maybe worthwhile to, you know, I don't want to pin anyone down in terms of when's it going to be done, but maybe in another month or so, maybe we can get another update in terms of-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions on the zoning map?
I think that it's a terrific idea to do this because we're starting our open space committee.
Right.
And I'm sure that the public, you know, for their input, needs to see these zones very clearly, which, you know, really is difficult, I know, for me to actually discern. So for our open space committee, as well as our master plan committee, you know-
Absolutely.
Yeah, we need these-
Another month, we'll have another update for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I just want to note this, and I have not been involved in the process with Mr. Stoner and Dave's office, but if, in the future, because it's being done in GIS, if we ever wanted to host an interactive map online, it's not difficult at all, once the files have been, you know, the layers have been created. And so if we want to explore that in the future, you know, we could, we could definitely entertain that, and my office does that for a few other municipalities. So ArcGIS Online actually is the kind of host platform for it, and it can be managed by the township, and then it can be interactive, so you can, like, actually find your property, have a base map underneath it, if we want to look into that in the future.
Okay, and again, so I think this is being done, and we'll report on that here, but it's really been done by the township, so it may be worth reaching out to Mr. Stoner and, you know, offering.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will do.
Any other questions on that?
I just echo, I strongly recommend it goes ArcGIS. You get to set this up, you pick the right layers, and it's interactive, it's usable, and you're going to save a lot of, you know, definitely be a more powerful tool.
Okay. Okay, our next topic is conform copies of ordinances. So some of the discussions we've had in the past is that some of our ordinances, I'm not going to say they're outdated, but you've got to take an ordinance together with what's online and marry them together. So, so the goal's been to conform them. So similar to the zoning map, I know the township's been doing a lot of, a lot of good stuff to try to bring that current, so I'm going to ask Ms. Fox to, if she can give us an update on what's going on there.
Yes, so I received information from Roxanne Landy, our township clerk, and we do have the updates in progress with the company for eCode, and it just needs to take approximately, I believe she said, six to eight weeks for it to actually populate in the eCode, but we got the approval and we're moving forward with that.
That's great news, thank you, thank you. Any questions on that from anybody? Another topic is traffic engineer. So on some of our, I'll call them our larger applications, it may be worthwhile to consider hiring a consultant, just as, as we have Mr. Simmons and Mrs. Samar, but this consultant would, would really specialize in the, the area of traffic engineering, and certainly Mr. Simmons has been doing a great job on, on the, on the day to day stuff, and I appreciate that. But I think the feeling is that we should do that, and we've had some discussions, actually, we've got a few members that have, you know, just looked at it a little bit further, so if you guys can maybe give us your thoughts on what you found?
Yeah, well, we, we discussed with, with the engineer that was, it was limited early on, on the project, and one of the things we discussed, one of the, one of the main points was if we're, we restart this, how, how quickly could he update his information and get us a fresh report? And he, he said that was basically just days, so that was a good thing. And, you know, we, the discussion was most of the, sorry, whichever way I'm talking, which microphone? All right. You know, basically, the, you know, the discussion was that the majority of the data that was collected, he believes is still relevant. He said that can be, that can be double-checked by electronic means and by spot checking certain areas, but basically, the way he explained it is the, kind of similar to the way you, you go on Waze or, or, you know, or one of those mapping things, you ask for traffic, they get the data from the cell phones, and since almost everyone has a cellphone, they're collecting that data, and they can actually get spot traffic counts from, of service that pulls it from that, that stuff. So it's, it's a good way of checking things without having to put someone out there. That's, that saves us a cost, and that's, that way we can check the, he can check the work of the applicant's traffic person, you know, for, for accuracy. So that was, those were the main things that I gleaned from it, so.
Yeah, same here, and just, just a comment additionally, that it would, it would need to be updated, and updating it, you, you know, if you could actually expand, there was, you know, issues of, you know, COVID versus counts now, although there may not have been no dramatic change with some of the other activities going in around the area that it should be considered, you know, and definitely updated.
So again, just, just a clarification, so this is not to actually perform a traffic study, this is actually to look at what the applicant submits and, you know, look at it with the same set of eyes as our professionals do now, but this person would be a specialized traffic engineer.
They'd be our expert.
They are, yeah. And I think, I think the goodness there is also that, taking that approach, that this would not be paid for by the township, it gets paid for out of the funds, Mr. Collins, what's it, the escrow accounts?
It's paid by the applicant's escrow account.
Yeah, so, so, um, it sounds like it may be a good idea, I don't know, you, you guys' thoughts after talking?
Yeah, we, we didn't feel there was, we felt there was value in it.
Okay, anybody else's comments?
I like that.
Okay, so, Mr. Collins, we're going to ask for some help here in terms of how we move this forward, do we need to-
When you're ready, you would adopt a, maybe at the next meeting, a professional services agreement with the traffic engineer, and they submit the paperwork for that, and we review it with Dory and with Mr. Zep.
So we would ask them to, to give us their agreement?
We have, yes, and they're, we have the form, we know the forms and the-
Okay.
-types of documents they have to provide, it's a professional services agreement and a professional services resolution, and that's what, I think we would be doing something similar to, you've seen that before.
Okay, thank you.
We did go into qualifications, experience, availability, and just, it was kind of standard protocol for the experience that they had and the commitment they'd be able to make to the board.
How long does, you know, how, how much time are we talking about in terms of, you know, a study for an application? Do we know? Like typically, how long does it take them to do this?
Well, basically, what happens is the, you know, the, the traffic study is, is required to be done by the applicant. They're, they're going to submit that, then that, then they have a period of time, and, and we know that by the time something gets submitted and the time it's heard, there's plenty of time in there for him, him or her to review the information and get their-
Four or five days.
Yeah, four or five days is what they're saying, and there's, so there's more than enough time for them to, to do that review.
Yeah.
Because they're not doing the study, they're doing a review of the study.
Right.
And then they would come to your meeting for hearings on that application.
Right.
And like Dave comes and Catherine comes, they'd probably be here primarily for the traffic portion of the case.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll, we'll move out and we'll see about getting that taken care of. All right, then the last item on other board business is, so we've had a couple meetings on, on parking standards, and I, and I think when I look at where we started to where we are now, I think there's been a lot of value from, comments from everyone on the board here and from members of the public, our professionals. The last meeting we had on the subject, there were a lot of questions that came up, so we tried to get all those questions out to everybody in the board to make sure that, what we want to do is we want to bring forward an ordinance at either our next meeting or the meeting afterwards, that says, we've addressed all these concerns, and then put it to a vote, as opposed to try to, you know, to, to build. So if you have concerns, could you please get them to Catherine as soon, as soon as possible? So when she rewrites the ordinance, she, everyone's, all the comments have been addressed, and, you know, we can't possibly address all the concerns because some were conflicting. So, but I, I think we're close enough now that we either think it's a good idea as a team, or we don't, but let's put it to a vote and see where it goes, I think that would be the, the goal. So does anybody have any questions on, on that? Okay. Have you, no one down here? I got a member that looked both ways. Okay, so that's all the, the subjects, all the topics I had on other board business, so I think now that moves us into updates. Town council, Deputy Mayor Blomedy is not here tonight, but he will brief us at the next meeting. Environmental commission.
Thank, thank you, Chairman. I, I don't have really anything to update that I haven't really brought forth previously. I would like to just pass around the Arbor Day tree planting event in Sparta Glen for perhaps folks to take a look at the agenda, so you're aware of what's going on from that angle. So it should be a great event, Christine Rogers has done a lot of work on it to make the day a really fun and educational day for our students, middle school students.
April 26th?
Yeah, and the rain barrel workshop is, it's almost sold out, there's one place, one rain barrel left, and it's free, and it's fun for the family, yeah. And that's going to take place right out here, in front of the municipal building. I made an error, last time I stated that we had a student that joined the environmental commission. It's not a student, it's an, it's a college student, and he's an adjunct member, so, and that's Landon Tanyeri. So I apologize for that, but we will be getting a student liaison soon, hopefully. And that's about it, thank you.
Christine, do you mind if I pass this to members of the public?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I'll just run down real quick some of the other ones. Master Plan Subcommittee will be having a second meeting on March 22nd, the topic there is going to be goals and objectives. The ordinance Subcommittee, I apologize, I still need to get that back on track, where we'll talk about the economic, economic development zone. Minor Site Plan Subcommittee, so we met before tonight's meeting, I think we have about nine applications. I think we had one tough one where we actually met with the applicant tonight, and I think we made some progress, so I think the team there is doing a great job, and we appreciate all the work that everyone's doing there. This one, I do, I do want to make sure I spend the proper amount of time on, and that's on the Planned Endorsement Advisory Committee. So we had our second meeting of the year on March 5th, and I believe the team felt that we are now ready to come forward to have some discussions with the public. We're going to target, Ms. Fox, I think we said April 3rd, was that? April 3rd, we'll come before, we'll have a session of the planning board where the Plan Endorsement Committee, Advisory Committee primarily, Catherine is going to brief the public on the process and answer any questions that you may have, and I think that's, that would be a good, good time to really kick off this process and let people know where we're standing. So again, a lot of good work by everybody on, on that team. We've met a couple times, and I think everyone's excited to go to this next step, and hopefully we'll see a good turnout on, on the 3rd. Anyone else want to add anything on any of those committees that I may have missed? I know there was a lot of people involved, so. Okay.
The only thing I would say for the site plan committee, the minor site plan committee, Raisha's been very-
Yes.
Very helpful, and I think she should be acknowledged with that. She's a new employee here, and she's really doing a good job keeping us focused and reminding us to respond to you, and she should be acknowledged for that.
Yeah, and to that point, I think the, the person that came in today, the applicant, actually went out, went on their way to say the same thing, that she's just been terrific. So many thanks. Okay, unless anyone has any questions there, I think that moves us into open to the public for comments on, for comments on matters not on the agenda, or matters not related to a hearing, to a hearing on an application for development. So any members of the public who should speak tonight?
Jenny Derrick, Stop and Desparda. Still, same question as last meeting, what is the implication for the Sparta Township Planning Board regarding the diamond chip application rejection at the county level?
Same answer, we shouldn't talk about diamond chip application in the meeting without the applicant being here on, and so that will be when their hearing is taking place.
So we're going to continue with the hearing even though they can't, I mean, and Mr.-
We're not going to talk about the details of anything about the application, but just every site plan and subdivision requires that it be conditioned, if there is an approval, it'd be conditioned upon all other governmental approvals, and municipal land use law specifically requires county planning board approval, so that will be required. If they never get it, then they won't be able to build.
But they've already been, they've already received a non-approval.
Right, and that doesn't mean that they can't process an application at the Sparta Planning Board or at any planning board, that's, the two, there's two separate governmental reviews, and the, any township approval would require county approval, and if, and that's a requirement of the municipal land use law.
But reading the applicant, reading the letter from the engineer, the report?
Ken, I think we're now way beyond talking about just the procedure, we can't talk about the diamond chip application outside their hearing, and their hearing is not tonight, and the applicant is not present, so.
Well, I can talk, you don't have to answer me. The, the letter does state that it's been not approved for safety reasons, and since, as Mr. Collins stated, that a county approval is required for the township to give their approval, to, to continue with the application seems redundant, unnecessary, not my opinion, and I know that this very rarely happens, so it's possible that there hasn't been any in this, in our, in Mr. Collins' experience, but the applicant, the letter, the response from the engineer, the letter giving advice to the planning board at the county level to reject, brings up a whole host of ways that they could remediate, but that would require a new application, and then that would mean that we would have to get a new application here as well. So something, it's mystifying why we would, why we would continue to expect the hearing to continue, it's litigated, it's being litigated, I understand that, but it seems pretty clear that if a requirement of the project to be built is county approval, and it doesn't have county approval, it can't be built, similar to when Captiva got their approval with a deed restriction. That could never have been built with the deed restriction on it, so we're, we're kind of in the same situation here, this is something that can't be built because it does not have an approval that is required for it to be built, for it to be completed.
Okay, any other comments from the public?
Yes, hi, Margie Murphy, Nine Pueblo Parkway. Can I ask what you were talking about, the traffic studies for what, or was that just in general?
In general.
In general?
Yes.
And there were traffic studies that were not asked, they were, are supposed to be done by the applicants?
Yes, and I, I think in some cases, and I, Mr. Simmons is, I don't know if there's a threshold or it's just a judgment, but one, one, what would be the trigger to say when a traffic study is, is needed?
Well, I, I think basically on larger applications, that would in particular require permit for an access to a state highway or to a county highway, that would probably trigger something that would have to be done by the applicant's traffic engineer, his consultant, especially if they knew from the size and scope of the project, if it met certain thresholds where the state or county definitely was going to require a permit.
Okay, so there, there are some traffic studies that have not been done that should have been done.
No, I mean, let me, I want to make sure we're, we're clear there.
In the past, and with, this is going forward, I understand, correct?
So, so going forward, when a traffic study is required, the board will look at it in terms of, work what our- terms of work with our professionals to determine, is this something that we can do with the normal course of business, or is it large enough that says maybe we want to bring in a little extra help on this one? And that's the intent of what we talked about tonight, is for those larger applications, no one in particular, it may pay to have a, someone that does just traffic engineering, a consulting firm, come in and help us evaluate that study.
I think that's absolutely necessary. I think that's terrific and absolutely should be done, as well as any developer or somebody that wants to come in and bring something large into our town. What do we get out of it? What do we get for letting them, if possible, allowing them to build something large in our town? How do we benefit by allowing that to come in? And there's many other towns and many other cities in the state that places have wanted to build something very large that needed a huge amount of space, and they benefited by having golf courses built, by having parks, and by having baseball fields built. Have, is that put into, not necessarily a code, but it should be, you know, it should be brought up by someone on this committee or zoning board committee that we should benefit tremendously by having, I mean, yes, we have a new shop, well, not we, but in Sussex County, up in Sussex, there's a new shop right, and it's Wyble Plaza. But did he donate the land? I mean, just saying, it's named Wyble Plaza, Wyble Street. What, you know, what did the town get in allowing this to happen? That should be put into consideration, and with people on all the boards that maybe have real estate expertise that could bring that into the pot. Also, and I apologize, what were you talking about, parking, and where is that in, just in general, but?
So over the last, not the last couple, we've had a few meetings on looking at adjusting the, possibly adjusting the parking standards for indoor recreational uses. And we've kind of looked at that because we think that may be a good use to bring into this town, kind of like what we heard tonight on that, on application. And so there's been discussion about what would that look like? And we've had, I guess, two meetings, three meetings, I don't know what it is. So at the next meeting, we're going to kind of bring all that to a final, hopefully a final conclusion, says this is what it's going to look like, and does it make sense?
Indoor parking?
No, no. Indoor recreation, recreational, such as, we talked about cheerleading, it could be karate, it could be cross, you know, it could be, you know, indoor recreational uses, could be a field house. So think of any recreational use that's being done indoors.
And it's limited to certain zones?
Yes.
It's not?
Just a quick overview, right now, the parking ordinance that's on the books only has a requirement for what's shown as dance studios and karate classes, which is hyper-specific, and it doesn't have any other standards for anything else prescribed, despite those uses being permitted, like the one we heard tonight. And so we were trying to find a way to expand that to other indoor recreational uses, and also look at the parking standards specifically in bigger zones like the ED Zone, like this, like this property that was here tonight.
Oh, okay. And that was the cheerleading? I missed that, I just talked to them briefly outside, sorry.
So not in the town center, not in places where there's shopping centers that may have multiuses, not in those zones at all, only in these kind of larger zones where it would specifically only be one use of that property would relax the parking a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Scott, Nine Pueblo Parkway. Just a quick question, I just want to know. Why is Mr. Collins working on the diamond chip application? Why is he defending the planning board when he was one of the ones that helped craft the ordinance before the application ever came in front of us? Isn't that a conflict?
No.
You being the judge, is that what you're saying?
Just not a conflict, Mark. If you have something further you'd like to add, you can add.
You can work to design the ordinance, and then you should, taking money from the developer, and then, essentially navigate, shepherd this thing through.
I'm not shepherding anything through, Mark, I'm the board attorney.
Mr. Scott, I don't think the question's appropriate. I mean, we respect the fact that you could ask it, but, I mean, you're directing it at Tom, and/or the board here, and I think we've moved on and passed that right now. Mr. Collins?
He's our attorney. I agree.
Wanted to thank you for working on the map and the ordinance review. I really appreciate that.
And I'd love to take the credit, but it's all the people.
Dory, and for everybody else who's doing the work.
We're reporting out, but the work's been done by a lot of folks, so.
Got a lot of good work done today. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to mention briefly, this is Anand Dash, Seventeenth Pond of Rosetta. Ron, I just observe, you know, I'm very pleased to see the cadence in which you speak, and your considered and thoughtful approach to these meetings, I think is tremendous.
Thanks, the whole board.
And the whole board. And I think you bring a dignity to this board that it needs, and I appreciate that very much. And while we're on the topic of giving credit to folks, I think all of us, you would all agree with me, that the value that our local press provides to the, for the accountability for the public, the wealth of knowledge and experience that it brings for all of us who may not be paying attention, makes us, elevates all of us. And I think whether implicitly or explicitly, we should be appreciative of that and continue to support our local press. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Dash, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I think with that, we're going to move into executive session, unless I typically miss something? Did I'm checking to everybody, did I miss something on the agenda? Okay. So before we do that, I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight for coming out tonight, for all your comments. Also like to thank the people that may be watching on YouTube, on the stream, either live or later. So again, thank you very much, we wish they one a good night, and we're going to go into an executive session where we're going to talk about the pending litigation of diamond chip realty LLC versus Sparta Township Planning Board, and Anand Dash versus Sparta Township Planning Board, and attorney-client privileged communication along those lines.
And we will not, we will not be going and needing to take any action after the closed session, so even though we will open, there will be no action taken after the closed session. So it's a resolution to go into closed session pursuant to Section 7 and 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act to discuss matters of attorney-client privileged communication, pending litigation, the two just described by Mr. Day. Is anticipated at this time that the subject matter will may be made public upon completion of all litigation and appeals, and when deemed appropriate. And is there such a motion?
We have a motion.
In a second?
You got a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Do a roll call, just for purposes of the record.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Nick Pompeoio?
Yes.
Ernie Reisberg?
Yes.
Mike Sylvester?
Yes.
Chairman Ron Day?
Yes. Thank you, folks.
And then we'll adjourn after.
They're live.
All right.
All right, may I have a motion to go back into open session?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Well, second, who depending.
Roll call, please.
Nat Burke.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Justin Canales.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Nick Campilio.
Yes.
Ernie Ragsbad.
Yes.
Mike Sylvester.
Yes.
Sharon Ronde.
Yes. All right, we're back in open session. Do I have a one before we close? Does anyone have any thoughts? And if not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Do we need a roll call at that time?
Yes, roll call.